I tease Fatima a lot. She says, "But you'll catch your eye, Paul." I said, "My generation was way back. We said anything we wanted to say."
Great. So, welcome, everyone. We're starting today's meeting on rules and regulations. I will ask our clerk to please take attendance.
Counselor Taylor?
Here.
Counselor Brown and Counselor Judith Garcia.
Present.
I'll also make note of the fact that Counselor Avellaneda is present.
Thank you. Counselor clerk?
The following subject matter will be discussed. Discuss the council's rules and regulations. Officials invited to attend the subcommittee are members of the council and anyone interested.
Well, great. So, today, thank you so much Counselor Taylor and Counselor Avellaneda for being here today. The purpose of the meeting is to discuss and revise our rules and regulations. Thank you for submitting written suggestions. So, today, we will cover rule number eight, rule number thirty-eight, rule number forty, and rule number forty-one. So, let's start with rule number eight on page two. We have rule number eight written as follows. Speaking decorum, and I'll start reading the rule as it is now and the proposed change presented by Counselor Taylor. Counselors will speak only on the question under debate. No debate will be allowed by the president unless there is a motion on the floor. Each counselor will speak only once on the question before the council. No counselor shall hold the floor for more than five minutes before any debate. One counselor may yield his/her time to the maker of the motion if the five-minute time is insufficient. The person who yields their time will not be allowed to speak on the motion. Counselor Todd Taylor proposes the following. No counselor should use language that is profane or is used to offend, insult, or defame another counselor. If a counselor breaks this rule and there is a subsequent objection, the offending counselor must apologize and have the comments taken down, or the offending counselor will be prevented from speaking for the remainder of the meeting. As much as possible, counselors must try not to refer to the other counselors by name but as the counselor from district or the counselor at large. If a counselor mentions another counselor by name during debate, the counselor mentioned shall not be prevented from speaking to rebut regardless of whether that counselor has already spoken on the matter and may not be ruled out of order by the president. So, Counselor Taylor, I will give you a moment to share, and just for clarification purposes, are you seeking to add to what's already existing or are you seeking to change it completely to read as follows?
No, this would be added to the, added to rule number eight as it exists.
Okay, yeah.
So, that section would just be put in.
Yeah.
After the person who yields their time will not be allowed to speak on the motion, and then you would insert my paragraph there.
Okay, wonderful. I'm okay with that. Anyone else wish to speak on it? No? Okay. So, I guess we agree on that. So, thank you, Counselor. Now, we move on to question number thirty-eight, please. So, I will go ahead and read time limits for communications. All communications from the city manager, communications addressed, and again, this is the original format. All communications from the city manager, communications addressed to the city council, and petitions must be first, must first be deposited with the city clerk and timestamp. No such communication or petition time must be first deposited with the city clerk and timestamped. No such communication or petition timestamped later than four P.M. On the Thursday preceding a regular meeting shall be presented to the city council at the meeting unless unanimous consent of the council should have been first obtained for the same. So, now, the proposal by council office, so this actually is presented to us by our council staff. No such communication or petition timestamped later than four P.M. On the Wednesday preceding a regular meeting shall be presented to the city council at that meeting unless unanimous consent of the council should have been first obtained for the same. So, I will give an opportunity to our council clerk. Is there anything you want to add?
No, that was noted out by the administrative assistant, and that's how she handles her, handling of the orders when you present them, and she has to have that amount of time all day Thursday and after day to post it.
Okay, okay. So, I'm personally okay with that if, you know, it's, I think that the office staff, I trust that if this is the way they function and it's easier for them than, and for you, then...
Well, it wouldn't be, excuse me, Madam Chairman, the, it's not for the expediency of it, it's the required forty-eight hour posting notice.
Okay.
If they come in late Thursday at four o'clock, we wouldn't meet it.
That makes total sense.
Yeah.
Okay. How does everybody else feel about that rule?
I'm okay with that.
Okay. Counselor Brown?
I still think, I mean, I apologize for coming in late, so...
I can briefly debrief you, brief you here. We covered question number eight.
Yeah.
And now, we're in question number thirty-eight, which is in the, it's the second-to-last page.
So, we covered question number eight. You mean rule number eight?
Yes, I'm sorry, rule number eight, yes.
Okay, so, what was questioned by that? If you can brief me on that.
So, I'm going to agree with it. I'm okay with it. So, just going back to rule number eight, Counselor Todd Taylor is proposing to add what's written in red. It's, he's proposing to add that to the already existing rule.
Yeah, I disagree with that. You know, I think one of the things we have done as a city council is try to come up with mechanisms, try to prevent things happening and things escalating into such embarrassment as a council that we should, you know, take actions where we have to try to prevent these outbursts from council members, direct attack on council. I just don't see where this language gives us any leadway in preventing. I, i-if it comes up, an insult come up, or if some language comes up where we're talking directly to, maybe a counselor's name is mentioned, I just don't think we need to escalate it by offering, you know, back and forth. I think by having the chair, whether it's the chairwoman or the chairperson, man, they would get a motion on the floor and let the council members make a decision that, you know, it's, what's been said is what's been said. It's out of order, can't take it back, but we can't entertain conversation going back and forth, so that's why I disagree with it.
Okay. So, your, Counselor Todd Taylor, please.
So, let me explain. First of all, I took these rules almost verbatim from Robert's Rules. So, I purposely inserted them into our council rules so that no one could, you know, claim that they didn't know Robert's Rules or whatever. But this is an important thing because I think Counselor, Counselor from District Eight is conflating the two issues. One issue is for decorum purpose, and if somebody says something, they need to either take it down, take down the comments, or that i-if they, if they refuse to, then they're, then they can't speak for the remainder of, they can still vote on things, but they would not be allowed to speak for the rest of the meeting. Now, this is taken right from Robert's Rules, so, you know, th- these are basic rules of decorum that are pretty much universally recognized. As far as the mentioning the, mentioning a counselor's name, again, this is in case something, it's not a matter of stopping something before it gets embarrassing. It is. It's a matter of, it's a matter of fairness and an adherence to the rules. This body has rules, and whoever is sitting in that chair must also obey the rules, and that means if it's not set out here in the rules of the council, it defers to Robert's Rules. So, again, you know, I think these are pretty basic, and if somebody's making an accusation or a charge or whatever it is, or just mentions their name, they should be able to have that extra time to rebut whatever they, whatever they said. Otherwise, things are left hanging, and it's not fair. So, either we throw out rules of procedure, parliamentary procedure, or we adhere to them. So, that's why, you know, and quite frankly, we do need an update in decorum.
Yeah, I agree with that. If you finish, Counselor Taylor. But again, it states it in the first part of the rule number eight. It says, "Council will speak only on question under debate." That's the rule. Anything else other than the rule alleviating to this here, these comments here that's in red goes outside of the rules?
No, it doesn't, actually.
It does.
No.
It does. I mean, that's something we, you know, again, that's something that the body can...
These are basic rules of procedure that almost every deliberative body uses. So, you know, I don't, I don't quite understand the objection because just about every, you know, like I said, every deliberative body uses these rules, so I think we need to tighten up the rules, not loosen them.
So, if I can propose the following idea here. I see both intentions. I see Calvin Brown's, Counselor Brown's, I see that you can foresee the back and forth being nonstop if we keep going with names back and forth, back and forth, but I also see Counselor Todd Taylor's point of view that if a name is mentioned, the other person should be able to speak. So, how about we reach a consensus and...
Well, by rule...
Can I, let me just finish.
By rule, Madam President, by rule, the name shouldn't be mentioned.
No, I get that, but it's happened before.
Okay, that's what I'm saying.
So, so, my proposal...
People often break the rules.
My proposal would be, what if we limit the back and forth? So, if a counselor is mentioned by name and the other person has the right to speak, we can limit that interaction to a certain amount of time. So, maybe we can say, you know, it should not last more than five minutes. It should not last...
It's already in the rules about four minutes, I believe.
It says five minutes.
Sorry, five minutes.
Five minutes.
I think it's already in there.
Okay, so...
I hear you. If I could just speak on that, again, it's not about limiting and having them back and forth. I mean, what we need to do if we want this to be a clear rule is when, if you want, when we open up the agenda, we need to state that these are the rules, council members should be up to date on the rule. No council member should call another council member by name or directly. It's through the chair, and we need to tighten up on that by allowing someone to get heated in a debate and say, "Well, Counselor, you know, Blue Fish," and Counselor Blue Fish, "my name was mentioned. I want to have a rebuttal of what's," it opens up an argument which is unnecessary and unfair to the public.
Want to comment?
No, no, I'm okay.
I mean, I, I'll disagree and leave it at that. I don't think it opens up any kind of heated anything. I think that people can be perfectly reasonable without being heated, or it doesn't have to be an argument or devolve into chaos, a-as long as people adhere to the rules. And so, from my perspective, and this is why we had a meeting in the last term in closed session to determine that these rules needed to be changed. I've submitted the necessary changes. I'll leave it at that. My comments will stand.
Okay.
So, and if I could just, in my comment, the reason why we had the meeting was because a lot of the rules were being violated, and we stated that there need to be some responsibility, and those rules need to be enforced. Not that we needed to change rules, we changing rules because we get a chance to look at rules. I mean, listen, I'm sure you don't know how many rules we got here, but I do, but we're looking at two changes in the whole, whole thing to talk about decorum of actions from the council.
Okay. So, is there anything else that you want to add here to this rule? Rule number eight. So, I have your point?
I would, I would make a motion to, you know, if we're going to, you know, if we're going to take this for what it is, that we should have a copy of where it came from, and, you know, as the council member said, that it came straight out of a book, and we should all have a copy and to verify that.
Do you...
Look, look, it's, it's irrelevant. I'm proposing this change, so it does, nobody needs to have a copy. If you want to go on Robert, get Robert's Rules and look it up, you can, or Ricketts' Rules, or, or any of the other...
Cusack's Manual.
Parliamentarian, you know, books out there, you know, look at, look at the United States House of Representatives, you know, look, look at any of the other deliberative bodies. There's a number of these. They're re, they're readily accessible on the internet.
Mm-hmm, okay.
I mean, Madam Chair, honestly, the council member stated that he took it directly from a source, and if he took it directly from a source, whether it's in the House of Congress or on Wikipedi, Wikipedia or anywhere else, that's not what he stated. He stated exactly, so let's bring it in, and, you know, we'll go from word and we'll look at...
What does that, what does that matter?
Because it's relevant to what you said.
Counselor, with all due respect, I've got the right to propose a change to the rules, no matter where it comes from. If I, if I wanted to make up any rule I wanted and submit it, I've got the right to do so. So, look, I mean, this is part of what I'm talking about, folks, is that we need to have rules that we all live by. So, you know, trying to make up some new thing like it can't be proposed unless we get, you know, something that's completely irrelevant is, 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 you know, unbelievable. So, I, you know, this is my proposal, okay?
Yes.
This is all I'm going to say on the matter from here on out.
Okay. And I will clarify to members of the public who are present here today, but also members of the public who are watching. It was clearly stated in the previous meeting that any counselor is welcome to submit in writing any suggestion, any edit, any changes that would like to see to, to the rules. So, right in front of us, we have a list of the rules. I have been reading at the very beginning, the rule as it stands, and then the proposed rule. But the purpose of the meeting as well is to have a dialogue, open dialogue, to, to see and reach some sort of agreement before we propose and we present something to the council in our next meeting.
The, the person that misquotes another counselor, even if it was in the newspaper, a misquote or something, you have the right to stand up under personal privilege and defend yourself. It's not in debate to someone else. It wouldn't be in debate to the newspaper. It wouldn't be in debate to another counselor that mentioned your name improperly. It would be a point of clarification, and, and you would allow that counselor the couple minutes to clear his, his or her name.
Which...
That's all. It's not that they should be continuing to debate back and forth.
Right.
It's just that if I inaccurately or politically accuse Todd Taylor of something, he has a right to stand up under personal privilege and say, "That's inaccurate because," but you wouldn't go back and forth to me.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
That's all I think he's looking for here.
And, and the chair, and the chair does not have the power to, to rule somebody out of order if they're trying to call a point of, a point of clarification, a point of order, you know, you must, that person must be recognized by the chair, and if they do not, the chair is wrong.
Okay. So, thank you for clarifying that, and thank you, Counselor Clerk, for, again, clarifying that. So, if we are okay with members here, we can move on to question number thirty, to, sorry, rule number thirty-eight?
Just from my notes, again, I'm against this, so keep changing.
Okay. So, the record will show that you're not in favor, and...
What you have in favor, and he's in favor?
I am honestly indifferent about it, but...
So, in other words, when you send it forward, how are you going to rule on it?
So, I'm, I'm okay with it. You can, I'm fine with it. Number thirty-eight. We move on to rule number thirty-eight. So, time limits of communications, yes, that's where we were. So, the former, this was a proposal by our council office, and it's, it's our staff asking us to, asking us that no such communication or petition timestamped later than four P.M. on Wednesday preceding a regular meeting shall be presented to the city council at that meeting unless unanimous consent of the council should have been first obtained for the same. So, our clerk here explained why that request. I don't know if you want to repeat yourself one more time for the counselor who was late.
I got a call, but give me the rule thirty-eight?
Yes, rule number thirty...
Rule thirty-eight?
Yes.
Yeah, it's in red.
Okay. The reason being that we need a forty-eight hour notice to post, and if we get it in, like at four o'clock on a Thursday, we wouldn't meet the proper time. I mean, she would have to, whose other administrative assistant would have to start typing everything out at five o'clock, and then we'd have to bring it and get it posted by the clerk downstairs, and the clerk downstairs wouldn't be there to put it on the web in the proper time.
Okay. So, it's more logistical. Anyone here?
So, what's the change?
Forty-eight hours. We want to do it Wednesday at four o'clock, like we've actually been doing technically.
Yeah. So, we've been, we've been practicing this, but it has not been written.
So, yeah, so it's Thursday, which is forty-eight hours.
We want to move it to Wednesday for forty-eight hours. We're not meeting that Thursday deadline. They're coming in too late, the orders, and the clerk's office downstairs is closed.
So, I'm kind of confused.
So, we, so just for clarification...
So, if I could just speak, so if it's Thursday at forty-eight hours, is that correct? That we're not meeting?
If you come in at five minutes of four with an order and has to be typed out by the time, say you have ten orders, or more counselors come in at five minutes of four, we're not going to meet the clerk downstairs, tell them, "Wait, don't close your office." They have to put it on the web and post it, and they wouldn't meet the forty-eight hour requirement.
So, we're not going to meet the forty-eight hours? We just going to do it an hour a day before?
So...
No, 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 no. So, what's written in black...
Yep.
Is the way that, it was the way that we were supposed to follow it. What's written in red is what's being proposed and what we currently practice now. So, all that Fatima and our clerk are asking to have in writing officially under our rules the practice that we've been doing lately, which is what you've already been accustomed to. So, we submit petitions no later than four P.M. on Wednesdays. So, now, it's just having, having, having it in writing to update this rule to reflect what we have been currently doing. Does that make sense? We've been currently doing this, and we want to update the rule to show what we've been currently doing.
What you've been doing, right?
Okay. Are we okay with that, Counselor Taylor? Are you okay with it?
Yes, I'm fine with it.
Okay. So, now, we can move on to question number forty, which is public comment question. It's on the next page. The pres, so the current rule reads as follows. The president of the city council may set a time limit on the public comment section of the meeting. No person, the city couns, sorry, no person may address the council for a period longer than four minutes. Any person wishing to address the city council must first state their name and address for the record. No member of the city council, including the chairperson, shall answer or respond to any questions posed by their public, by the public except by written communication no sooner than the next meeting. No member of the Chelsea City Council should be allowed to speak or address the council during the public comment session. Proposed by Counselor Taylor, this is the new proposal. No person shall use language that is profane, insulting, or threatens violence. Furthermore, defamatory or slanderous language may not be used during public speaking. If any counselor objects to any such comments in violation of this rule, then the speaker must retract the comments or lose the right to publicly comment for that meeting. Likewise, any public communication must not use the aforementioned language. If any counselor objects to a public communication, it may, it may not be read at city council. So, I will allow the, I will allow Counselor Taylor, who proposed this rule change, to speak.
Again, this goes in the same vein as the previous edition, trying to bring a basic level of decorum to this chamber. Again, these are, these are basic rules that almost every deliberative, deliberative body has as far as public speaking goes. It's not a very high bar, you know, threatening violence, which has happened in this chamber Certainly, profane and insulting language has also been used, as well as defamatory and slanderous lan, language has been used in this chamber before, and I think this is a very low bar to try to, you know, bring that under control in...
Pretty much silent.
I-in, in this type of environment where people get carried away with passionate things that they believe in. Also, communications that are, it's the same thing, just in written form. So, that, that's all, trying to, trying to propose something that we all talked about in the last term in executive session that needed to be done. This does it, and it's very basic, very straightforward, and it presents a very low bar.
So, I will quickly make my comment on this. I am alarmed by this simply because I feel that it really limits the public speaking portion, the communication portion of it. Who's doing the policing? Who is, you know, when someone comes here to speak, it's very difficult to know, one, what they're going to say, and, two, who will have the authority to decide that what the person is saying is slanderous or is defamatory? If a child comes here and says, you know, "I have been, I don't know, molested by one of, by someone," or presents any sort of accusation, who am I? Or, who are we giving the power to say, "No, you're lying, or you're, this is a defamation?" So, that's the part that is, that is conflicting to me. Also, the, the part where it states if a counselor, you know, if a counselor objects to a public communication, it may not be read at city council. I, I don't, you know, and, and it's so, it gives way too much power to the council to allow, to allow public comment to be either in their favor or whatever it is. I think public speaking should remain public, the public speaking portion for people to say whatever they want to say because it's their First Amendment right. That's my perspective on this. I don't believe, I, I, there's been, all the instances, the seven years that I've been a city counselor, people have come here to express their feelings, their emotions, their thoughts, and I've seen it as, as productive. They hold us accountable, and I think that's important. So, that's where I stand with that. I do not want to limit the public speaking portion in any way, shape, or form. I have never felt threatened here in, in a sense of my life being at risk by any constituent, by, by any means. I understand, you know, your, your input for question number eight and our decorum and our responsibility as colleagues, but in terms of the public, I think they have the right to, to express themselves as, as they see fit. But before I let you go back, is there any other counselor here who wishes to speak? Counselor Brown?
Thank you, Madam. So, I believe this, just like rule eight is out of order, again, and you alluded to it in your comments, you can do it to us because we're the body, we can control ourselves, but to try to put in language and try to put in proposals to silence the public is, first of all, it's unconstitutional, and it's, it's definitely not a friendly environment that I, as a twenty-year member of a city council here, would like to try to be a part of. So, that's all I have to say. I think it's out of order.
Counselor Avellaneda?
I can see where, and I appreciate the body allowing me to make a comment, even though I'm not part of the committee, but as a counsel who wanted to attend this, I can see where the counselor is trying to get to, and I would, I would go along with some of this because we should have a sense of decorum and the idea of someone coming up here and speaking and criticize, yes, they should be allowed to do so in that... up here and speaking and criticize. Yes, they should be allowed to do so in that stall there. But I, when I read the first sentence and I, again, understand where you say, well, where's the line of defamatory or whatever? What's the line? If, if it was me to write the first sentence, I would say, no person shall use language that is profane, racist, or threatens violence. And then, and may not be, you know, and that language cannot be used in, you know, as part of public speaking because I think that that's where we stop it. Beyond that, I think that's where it gets a little muddy. But I think that we, what I, myself as a, as a president, if any member of this body was using profanity, threatened a fellow counselor, or was using racist language, would automatically get gavelled by me and I would say, uh-uh. And I think we should expect our constituents and our public be the same. And I think we can all agree that that's the litmus test I've seen so far. So beyond that, if it starts to be defamatory, whatever, well, I get it, but I think those three items I just stated makes sense and could probably be allowed. I don't know. Beyond that, that's all I would say.
I agree. How do you feel about that, Counselor Taylor?
I'm sorry?
How, how do you feel about it? What do you think?
So, so let me clarify. So first of all, I, I am a libertarian, so I'm very, I, I, I take, I take civil liberties actually very seriously about, especially free speech because I think free speech has been under assault as of recently. Now, that being said, counselor mentioned that this was unconstitutional. It is not unconstitutional. There are limits to free speech. It's clearly, you know, been, been a precedent by the Supreme Court for years and years. You cannot scream fire in a crowded theater. Okay? So you can't just come up and say whatever you want. That's, that, 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 that's not what free speech is. Okay? There are limits. What I have put out here, and I would agree with your, your, your points, counselor, about, about racist comments, but I would make it more broader than racist because, you know, insulting comments would include racist comments, but it would also include comments that were other things as well, not just racist, but whatever. Pick your, pick your poison. Now, as far as defamatory and slanderous things, to, to use, to use the counselor, the counselors, what, what, what she had a problem with was that who was going to be the judge and jury about who decides what? So I wish she was here during my comments because I'm just going to address them.
Just address the chair. That's what.
Well, I'd like her to hear it because she's going to be the one to vote on it. But I'll, I'll tell people at home when she comes back. Maybe we can read it back to her. You know, if somebody doesn't know if something is true or not, if they don't know for a fact that something's defamatory or slanderous, then, you know, I don't think people would object. But if somebody, if somebody says something that's obviously true, and, and who's the judge and jury? We are. And so if one of us knows that somebody's getting up and saying something that's blatantly untrue, meant to hurt somebody, meant with malice, that should not be allowed. I don't care about, you know, prattling on about, about free speech rights. There are slander laws. There are libel laws. This is where the government has restricted speech and rightly so. Rightly so. So for this body to bring up free speech issues, this is the, this is the farthest thing from, from restricting free speech. This is, this is restricting inflammatory speech. The counselor was talking earlier about wanting to keep things under control in this body. This is precisely the way to do it. You give this council the tools to make sure that that stuff doesn't happen and it won't happen. Nobody's free speech is going to be infringed upon by this. I mean, I mean, you know, you, you do not have a right to threaten violence. Okay? You shouldn't, whether, whether you've ever felt threatened or not. Okay? Two, I think we could all agree that nobody should use profanity in this chamber. This is the people's chamber and, and we need to respect this chamber. This is our house and we need to respect it. Okay? So, like I said, this is a pretty low bar. And if, if, if people want to vote against this, against restricting threats of violence, restricting people from purposefully coming up and slandering somebody, right? Or restricting insulting or racist comments or sexist comments or whatever other comments that people find offensive. The whole point of this is to get rid of all that type of language because it's not needed here. People can express themselves freely without any of this. And if you vote against this, you're voting for this type of stuff because people will be then still free to come up. And every example that I listed here has happened in the last few years. It has happened. So, which was part of the reason why we had a meeting, an executive session. So if we go to all this trouble, yes, it, yes, it was. The city solicitor asked the city solicitor.
Okay, so, um, counselor, so I will publicly disclose, I am only, I, I agree with the amendment proposed by Counselor Avianneta, but Counselor Avianneta, I'll give you the floor.
Again, I only addressed the first part of this whole paragraph. And that was, you know, what we could restrict or what I felt is needed to just set as a guideline, just to have it on the books of guidelines of what is acceptable language and the manner of delivering a public comment and what we would not accept. And, you know, between my years being here and also our city council clerk being here, not only his years as a city clerk, but also as a former alderman, you know, I go back to what he said earlier, which is if at any point in time, anyone said anything defamatory or slanderous to, then alderman or a city counselor. And I can't remember really, I honestly only remember a few handful that it could have happened. Then that city counselor, once the public comment period ended, had the right to and the ability to just call upon the president and say, I ask for a right of personal privilege and I need to address what was just said and I can rebuke or refute what was just said to me. And then if it actually is slanderous, then you have, you know, outside means of court and such. Rarely have we had the, you know, the, very rarely have we had whatever threats of violence. Do we want to prohibit it and just make it officially and codify it in the rules? Yes. But to the point where we ever had to actually call police officers here to say, you know, I think you need to escort someone out, once, that I remember in the twenty years, you know?
Twice with council members, not the public.
But aside from that, so not to say we shouldn't have it in books and so forth, but I'm just thinking the number of times we've actually had to use it versus actually going and putting something in the books. But some guidelines is great. Again, I think that hopefully you, you will go and, and take my amendment for what it is and I can, again, we can discuss this later on as a council as a whole, but I don't know if we really need the whole last, the second part of it. But I respect the opinion of the council who's making this forward. I get where he's trying to go. I'm just speaking for, I guess, from a position of experience here in the council and what was required and done.
Yeah. Counselor Brown, anything? Okay. So, yeah, I, I, I also echo that sentiment. I, I also see where you're trying to go with it. I agree with, with the three points. So, yeah, so I'll let you, if you want to.
I just have one other thing.
Sure.
And, and that, that was that, you know, as far as any counselor objecting, they can't just object for any reason. Okay? So you can't just say, I don't like this communication, therefore I object.
Okay.
That's not, that, that, that would not be allowable under my rule. Okay? The, the, the letter would have to violate the rule in order to be objectionable. And so, and so just because you didn't like what was being said in the communication, a, a counselor objecting is going to have to give a reason for his objection. And so, you know, I think that that, that's, that's very reasonable and I don't think anybody would object to anything that's, that doesn't violate these, these very basic rules. And yet, and yet, I, I can, I can remember at least, you know, a couple communications that, that did violate these rules. And, you know, so look, I, I, I think that regardless of whether it happens once in twenty years, or if it happens once in twenty meetings, or, or if it happens every meeting, these are rules that are reasonable and, and rules that we should conduct ourselves by. If you're, if you're, if you're, if you're saying, well, we shouldn't include slanderous and, and defamatory language because it really doesn't happen, I can only think of a couple times, that means that you are saying that we are not going to prohibit that kind of language. And so.
I'll say this, counselor, I'll say this. A comment being defamatory or slanderous is something that's handled and decided by a court.
Correct.
Not by public opinion. So that's why when, when I make the comment and the reason why I'm alarmed by it, and not alarmed in a horrible way, but it's very, I don't want to be the person who makes that judgment because I know that that judgment can only be made by a court. But I agree with you, I one hundred percent agree, no person shall use language that is profane, racist, or threatens or incites any violence. I agree with that. And now that you explained the last sentence, if any, if any counselor objects to a public communication, it may not be read at city council. I agree with what you've just explained.
Right.
My only suggestion and edit would be if you just clarified that, you know, if any counselor objects to a public communication that includes profanity and insults, threatening language, it may not be read by city council. That's the only thing I would add to it. But other than that, I'm okay with that. Are you, Counselor Brown, are you okay with that?
With the second part?
With the second part?
That's why I thought it was out of order.
It's, it's just right before that comma?
Yeah, I, I, I have no problem with that clarification.
Okay, beautiful.
That's, that's, that's the, that's the intent of the.
That includes profanity.
Of the rule change.
I agree with that as well. Okay? Do you want to say something?
No, I was, that's what I was.
Okay, we agree. We agree with that.
Now, past practice in the office, when we get a communication, we usually send, show it to the president. If they're not signed with the person's name and address, normally we don't send it forward, especially if it has improper contents. Yeah. So I mean, should we put that in writing? That all communications must be signed and with the name and address in order to have it.
That's actual practice and that makes sense that we actually put it in the rules.
Okay.
That no communication is accepted that does not have.
Name and address.
No communication should be accepted.
And, and we should talk, possibly talk about having that as an email too because typically we're now getting a lot of emails and it should, we can't, you know, accept one from homerunAOL.com, you know, that doesn't.
So then that means, so I, I think that's a good idea. So we should include it in all forms of communication. Any communication received in all forms of communication should include name, address. Okay, beautiful. So we'll add that. Wonderful. And then I guess the last rule is rule number forty-one. This is also proposed by our council office. All business introduced by any counselor must be deposited with the clerk of the council before the regular meeting is called to order in writing.
The reason why we requested that is there's been disputes now from certain counselors, I'm not going to say names, it's not worth it, that we didn't type it outright, I didn't say that, you know, things of that nature. So the office feels, why should we be accused of something we're not, we're only taking what you give us. So if you give it to us in writing, that's the way it goes in.
Okay.
As long as it's in proper form, we will, if we adjust, we would let you know.
Okay. Are, are you guys okay with that? Are you okay with that?
Absolutely.
Wonderful. So then we've covered every rule. Counselor Avianneta?
Again, I didn't submit anything, but I had three suggestions. I don't know if that is, or do I talk to, or did I miss the boat on submissions of any proposed changes?
So submissions were expected in writing, so all counselors could have it. Can you submit, can you submit it in writing for our next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, wonderful.
Okay, can I, I'll read them off right now. That way it's.
You don't have them. I mean, that's one of the rules.
Yeah, I think it'd be better for everyone.
We don't have them.
For all of us to read them.
But I'm going to give you, I'm verbally going to tell you what I'm going to introduce, but I will write it.
He will put it up.
So just to let you know what I plan on writing.
Sure, go for it, but don't open it to debate.
Okay, that's fine. One is to look at rule fifteen and rule fifteen is on the reconsideration. We right now open it up to anybody just to file reconsideration. And the purpose of reconsideration, Robert's Rules only allows actually the side that voted in the affirmative. A person on the losing side, so to speak, is not allowed to file for reconsideration. Makes no sense. I mean, think about it. If you lost and you plan on reconsidering, well, the winning side won, so what's the point of re, you know, filing reconsideration? The only purpose that has been allowed so far is, what I've seen is as a political tactic move and that wasn't the purpose of it. So just to bring that back up. So I think that we should look at that and say that only a member of the affirmative side can file for reconsideration, not the losing side, just the member of the affirmative side. And typically, the whole purpose of reconsideration was that in the time that they voted within the twenty-four hours, new information came out and they said, oh, if I had known that of new facts have come out to light, I wouldn't have voted for something and that would change my vote. So I would plan on putting something that would only, A, allow someone on the affirmative side to file reconsideration and obligate that person to change and vote negative. You can't file for reconsideration and then end up voting in the same way because again, that becomes a tactical method.
Okay, and then.
Reconsideration is regardless of how you want to vote, you want to change it or you want to go up or down, that's the, that's what reconsideration means.
So just for the purposes of, of, of making sure that we run this the most expeditious way, can you submit all of these in writing so we can, we can see them, get a moment to, get a moment for everyone to do their homework, digest it and then open it for debate? How's that?
I was just thinking about that very quickly. Say the vote went three to seven, was defeated. If, if you're on the prevailing side, you can move for reconsideration. So if it was three to seven, it was defeated and you're on the prevailing side, you're in the negative, you could call for reconsideration, not the person on the affirmative side. Okay?
We'll talk.
I'll, I'll explain that, yeah.
So, so I just wanted to make one general comment too that, that kind of goes with all of these things, is that I, I actually believe that it would behoove the city or, when we, when we try to submit a budget, to purchase a Robert's Rules book for every counselor so that they can learn and know Robert's Rules, so, so that when these questions that are already covered under Robert's Rules come up, we can. come up, we can actually adhere to the rules, instead of just trying to, to wing it and do whatever we want, because that's not really playing by the rules. That's, that's, you know, that, that's the thing that makes for chaos and heated, heated things when the rules aren't adhered to. So I, I would just make that comment, that, that, that's a pretty small investment that could have a, a big benefit if, if, if next go around, every counselor or every new coun, as long as you're counseling, you have an addition, you don't need a new one every year, but if a new counselor comes, that should be in their packet, Robert's Rules of Order.
Okay.
Real quick.
So can you just submit them in writing?
I will.
Please, thank you.
Somebody's got somewhere to go.
No, I think it's just more reasonable for everyone to get it in writing. Okay. Yeah, it's just more, more easier. Thank you, everyone.